So before we get started, we have a lot of people here. I'm not on Facebook much, but I know that's where it starts. So we'd like to get ahead of that a little bit. Kind of tell everybody where we are, not necessarily what you read, but what's really happening and update about the dog shelter and the live stream. So I'm going to ask Mr. Mater to take that over and explain those things before we get started.
Okay, thank you. I'll start with the live streaming because that's, that's the quickest of the two. As everybody probably knows, we started live streaming last month. That's what I'm trying to do here at the same time. We're working all the kinks with this. The good news is we got a lot of good feedback from people so far saying that the video quality and audio quality was, was very good. To let everybody know, like, the registration process isn't fluid. That came up last month and I said it to the board last month. And we have a discussion item today to discuss this because what I'm going to be recommending to the board is to simplify and streamline the registration process since we're using a webinar streaming service. We really only need to list the link to that webinar on the website. Make it easy for people. The only thing I would request of everybody who does attend is just please, even if it's, this is for the people watching at home, even if it's just leaving a comment with name and address, that would be very helpful. And that isn't for any nefarious reason. That's because that's very helpful for me as a township manager and the township staff. When we go through minutes and especially with spellings of names and things like that, but also to understand where people are coming from in the township and general location. Because we can get an idea, okay, a lot of people from this area of the township were here or we're live at that, on that online meeting. So that's what we're going to be asking to do. As for expanding that to future, in the future to other meetings such as planning commission and zoning hearing board, we would like to do that, but like I said, we're still working out the kinks. Once that's worked out, then we can move it on to other meetings. So moving on to the dog shelter, I know, I'm not on Facebook, thank God, I despise it. But I'll tell everybody here that I've heard all the rumors. Not totally happy about, about them, but let's, let's talk facts instead of what people say to instigate people on social media. This was put up last, last month. The only change between last month and this month is, and I'll explain what it is first. We are working with the school board right now in an attempt to find possible other locations for the dog shelter area. We're working with them. They've been, they've been great so far. But the Board of Supervisors, I don't make this very clear to everybody here today, is not voting today to move the dog shelter anywhere. They never were. The motion that's on the agenda today is to hire an architect to, to evaluate four different locations. And then once that, those four locations are made or decided upon or evaluated, then what can happen is the architect can work with Barb Pasquale and have her, give ideas onto what she wants in the dog shelter. We already have a good idea. We spoke with her. We met with her. We met with her today. We met with her yesterday. And then it can come up with what's called a conceptual, conceptual design and estimate. Then we know what we're looking at. So everything is a process. And it takes a long time for this process to, to occur. I'm going to explain what's up there right now. The green in the middle of that blue, like polygon, whatever you want to call it, is the existing dog shelter and the carport for the, for the former police car, carport. When I met with Ms. Pasquale last year and she talked about the, the possibility of expanding the dog shelter, I was all in favor of it. She talked about enclosing the car, the carport, which in theory would be great, but it doesn't work in reality simply because you, you cannot just build walls and enclose that. She understood that, but her husband put together really detailed drawing, which she and I got a chuckle out of because of the mouse on the table. But the, that was basically what she looked at. I took it to the Board of Supervisors. They gave me the go ahead to apply for a GEDTF grant, which we were awarded in the amount of $320,000 to help renovate that, that building. Since then, what we looked at though is there, I'd say at least three different issues with that location. The first issue is, as everybody sees in that drawing, that is smacked up in the middle of the parcel now. When the old municipal building was there, it wasn't such a big deal because the municipal, municipal building and the dog shelter took about half of that parcel. Salt Shed took the upper, upper part. The salt shed is the piece right there, the big, the big rectangle says salt storage shed. So any future development that the board wanted to, would wish to entertain, whether it's this board or future boards, involving an upper portion, which may be a community building, a public safety center, library, whatever it may be. I mean, we don't have an idea of what that is yet, but that, the dog shelter as it is right now locks that upper portion with the only access being to the road, the orange road to the left. If you need overflow parking, the parking is down below. You have to have access somewhere between the upper parking lot and lower parking lot. And you do, you never direct people onto roadways. It's simply unsafe. So where we were at then is saying, okay, is there some other option that may work? And I spoke with Ms. Pasquale again. And the purple area to the, to the right that everybody sees next to the orange walking trail was the first location she and I discussed. We, it was middle of winter. We looked out my window. She said she spoke with the other volunteers and they thought that might be a good area. The problem with that area, I agree with her. I mean, it's, it's a beautiful area. It would be nice. It's secluded. However, if everybody looks to the left of that purple area, you see those lines that look like really long parking lot, parking spaces. That's not, that, that's the geofield, the geothermal field for this building. You can't build on top of it. Because you can't build on top of it, getting utilities there, I don't want to say is impossible, but it's extremely difficult. However, that's, that's one option. Second option, renovate the building as it is. The third option is the pink area to the, to the left of the dog shelter, of the current dog shelter that's behind the EMS building. This is probably the supervisors I spoke to is probably their first choice as an alternative. When we spoke with the school district however, they weren't interested in transferring or selling that property because East Union School is a straight line that you see to the left. And to expand it in the future, if they needed to expand it in the future, they would need that area. We made a mistake in this situation. That entire big area up top, the big circle is completely flat and happens to be where the Western Police Dog Training Area is. We included that. And when we went to the school board, we said, hey, how, can you give us that and that dog training area? They can't do that, as you can see, because they need that area eventually if they want to expand. So when Mr. Shoup, our engineer, came back with an alternate, alternative plan, he came up with that pink area, which is much smaller. It's a postage stamp. That would also work. He based his drawings off of this meeting we had between myself, Mrs. Jordan, Mr. Hallibob, Mr. Shoup and Ms. Pasquale. We took her drawing that her husband came up with, asked her what additional things she might need. She needs additional space. That leads us to the second problem with that. Well, let me, let me go back to the last portion. When we, when we saw that that might not be, the pink area might not be viable, we asked about what about the property behind the salt shed? And you see potential dog area, dog shelter area number two. That's what's causing a lot of consternation in the community. I know this. Okay, so, but again, these are just potentials. All these areas, all four of these areas are simply potential locations. Nothing more. So the, the problems with, I mentioned one of the problems is that it's smacked up in the middle of the parcel, which would impede possible future development. The other issues are space. And we, Ms. Pasquale and I discussed this when we met. There's three walls around that area. To expand it properly, we don't know if she will have enough space. When I met with her yesterday, she and I talked about that and she said, oh, she could eliminate the shed. My concern there is if you eliminate the shed, she needs additional storage. These are the things we're going through as we're discussing this with her and everybody as a team. And the last issue there is, there's, there's no, and this is the issue with basically all of them. I mentioned it with the original purple area. So much of where we can place a dog shelter is, comes down to utilities and how you can run utilities. Dog shelter right now does not, it has water. Unfortunately, right now, we used to be connected to the old municipal building with water. But now it's, we're powering it by a hose. It gets water there, but it's not nearly ideal. And there's no sanitary sewage there. So in order to get sanitary sewage there, and this is something I'd already discussed with the architect. I said, do you, would you have to demo part of the existing building as it stands right now to get proper sanitary sewage there and to connect into the, the closest location, which is next to that road that goes up and up next to the EMS building? So there's a lot of issues here, everyone, really. I mean, it's, it isn't cut and dry. Just do something or don't do something. It's, we're, we're beating the bushes. We're trying to do everything we can to work with her. The, the architect, if the board votes to enter, enter into the agreement with the architect today, the architect will work with her primarily. Why? Because who knows the dog shelter, shelter better than her and her volunteers? So it isn't the township forcing anything down anybody's throat. And for the fact, the fact that everybody is saying that they're kicking the dog shelter down to that yellow area, not true at all. So I don't want to, we, we can discuss this later and I don't want to belabor this, but that's where we are right now. No, no farther than that. We are at a point right now that we want to give, give Ms. Pasquale and the volunteers the opportunity to evaluate, with the architect, to evaluate all four locations, see what they think and then move forward from there. That's it. No farther. The board is not voting tonight or in October to, to move the dog shelter down to that yellow area.
So I think it's important to say too, when we first met with Barb, we had a deal.
I think it's important that when we first met with Barb, she had a wish list and we wanted to complete that wish list. So when her comments, I was, I don't care where we put it, I just would like to have these things. So we were under the impression there's, the yellow area is a much larger area. She would be happy with that. And then after we met with Barb again, and we met today, she is not happy with that area. So again, simple communication. We want to make her happy. She's willing to be there every day. So everybody wanted to jump on Facebook and try to build a vibe and be like, oh, you're talking about there. We didn't even think that was a concern. Now that she said that she doesn't want to be there, we're working over time trying to find her another place. So if you guys come up here tonight to, to speak about that, just know that we're, we take what Barb says very seriously and we're trying to put her somewhere that she can be happy with.
Okay, we'll move on with the meeting. One thing I'd like to add, there's a lot of people here. Everybody, if you have something that you need to talk about with your neighbor or someone beside you, if you could please take that out into the lobby. It's, it's very difficult to hear. It's very distracting when someone's talking. We're trying to get through our process when that occurs. And sometimes people are louder than they think. So we'd appreciate that respect for everybody. We don't want any boos or screams or anything like that. So if we could just very simple stuff we love in kindergarten, just have respect for one another, that would be great. Next, we have a registered speaker, Richard Hallibob, who would like to talk about the dog shelter and make a possibility master plan.
Evening, Rich Hallibob, 1936 Baker Street, Oklahoma, Illinois.
Tonight I'm here to, not to present a solution, but a starting point for a master plan. There were a lot of issues brought up at the last meeting about relocating the dog shelter. And I don't think that's necessary. And again, this is not a final solution and I'll get to my point. I, I'm not going to touch on Barb's concerns about safety or anything like that for the volunteers or the dogs, because I think we have enough speakers here tonight to address that. But if you, I apologize, this isn't a PowerPoint, but we are CAD station.
What we have here, we have an issue in the murder right here, the EMS here, the district attorney, the precinct here. This green space, those green spaces, is small park. Right out in front. The dog shelter, to say where it is, I looked at Barb's 30 by 30 edition for her wish list. And thus it, we come back the idiot and we're able to move some things around. The issue of a community center came up. This multi-story building furthest, furthest point north on its, its meaningful site is about 32,000 square feet. And when we think about that, it's compared to the Hampton Community Center, they're pretty close to what they have over there. The reason there is what's bigger is all on four. They do have an upstairs ground track and a couple of meeting rooms. But if we were to take, say, the Hampton Community Center, mainly concerned with all this, if you leave the shelter here, community center liking all this space, it's not true. The creative community center back here, we're a little short on parking. The Hampton Center has 162 parking spaces, a little short on that. But this area, as we hear on our other property, they have another pro parking area right there. It's something final design. It's a little tiny sheet. It's just a Chinese, historical, it's a spatial comparisons here with the rest of the water. So my point of attention here is, we think of a community center here, if you want to. We have room for that. We have room for the dog shelter and plus a gray space out front. Now, this is just one, just one idea. And the reason I'm here, like I said,
there's enough people here to speak on behalf of the shelter and the, the and what might prohibit its moving. But the planning commission, I spoke myself and four other planning commissioners, would like you to send a master, give us some time to create a master plan before you bring an architect on board and let us give you some ideas. We have a lot of experience on that board. So we could take something like this, a starting point, and maybe some of the supervisors could come to those meetings and people in the audience, and we can come up and propose something so that we, we do bring an architect on board. We had, we're a little more prepared. Because right now, besides the, Mr. Mater, can you put that back up there? Besides that drawing, and what I have on that board, that's all we have is a master plan. We asked for any other designs that you guys might have and we didn't receive it. So give the planning commission some time to give you a proposal, give you some more ideas and then sit down and work with the architect. So we can fit everything in here. We can keep this. We also did a little sketch based on Barb's. We didn't get paid for any of this. This is the current dog shelter here. This is just a little makeover here, the dog run, and that's the 30 by 30 area. So we put some time into this. We think we can make a nice building right where it sits. The dog shelter would complement the park. And we still have room for the community center in the back. Now, what else would go on this site? We don't know. That's why the planning commission would like to take a shot at coming up with that recipe with supervisors board, with, with the community involvement. And that's all we're asking you to do is give us a little time. Patrick Stark, our chairman, said to, that he's on board with this, so do Alan Banks, Bob Bechtel, Jake Horst again, myself. I'm able to get ahold of Mr. Harrison and Mr. Montes. So if you want to let us take a shot at it, we'd be happy to do it. Now, as far as the issue of utilities, going back here, out of this grid, it's a shelter. We're back here. Trying to get to the sewage line out here is a pretty costly effort. Need a grinder pump. And if you put the shelter in the back, closest van bolt cover was about 250 feet away. And when I talked to Deer Creek Drainage, it was only 53 inches deep. It's the last, it's the last van bolt cover on that line. Still need a grinder pump back there. We can use a gravity flow system to bring it down here. The water lines down here do not appear back from Oakmont Water. They think there may be a tap. It was abandoned, it's still there. She wouldn't have to pay for a tap and pour that water on anything. Those are the kind of things that the planning commission would like to see. So if you're going to hire an architect tonight to look at the Barrett Park concession stand, I don't have any issues with that. But if you are going to hire this architect, I'd like them to coordinate that with the planning commission.
All right, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Right now we're here. Comments from the public on agenda related items only. Please approach the microphone, list your name and address and limit your comments between minutes. Oh, here it is.
Our basic concern with the volunteers, and I've talked this all over between us, nauseous, bleeding, towards sick of it. But basically, our concern with that new site is it's unsafe. The new site's isolation increases the risk of vandalism, dog abandonment, harassment of animals, personal safety concerns for volunteers. At the current location, visibility and proximity to public roads provide layers of protection for all. We have the police on one side. We have the EMS on the other. And there's always somebody around you soon. Health risks for both sides is next to a bus garage and gas pump station. Constant fumes, diesel exhaust and engine noise will cause stress and potential long-term health effects for dogs as well as for the volunteers. I know the diesel effect myself because sometimes the road crew would park in front of the shelter and if it was there longer than 10 minutes, the fumes came into the shelter and I just went out and shut the truck off. And the guys were very tolerant of me. They're very nice to us. So the emergency response has been further from the police and EMS and road access puts us all in greater risk. And the EMS station, and it discourages dog abandonment or after hours. You can put all the cameras you want up there, but if somebody comes in with a hoodie, they can tie that dog to a fence and run off and be gone before the police could even get there. Down here, it's very obvious and they're afraid to do it here. I have never had a dog tied to a fence down here in the 34 years I volunteered here. And I am here literally every day and a half in. But down there, I can see a potential for a lot of damage. You tie a dog there, the kids are in the soccer field, that dog breaks loose, those kids could be hurt drastically. They see a dog tied and they think, oh, it's a friendly dog and they can get bit that way. It's a dangerous situation for our community kids and I don't want them involved in that. The current shelter has been here. The residents know it's here. They find it easily. They know to come to us for help if somebody is out of work and they need dog food. They know where to find us. We're sitting right along the road. Everybody sees us. We have seen chances where we have gotten adoptions and money donations because people were driving by and they may have been new to the township. And they put in that we didn't know there was a dog shelter here. This is nice. And the next thing I know, they either have got a new volunteer or they made a $100 donation to the shelter. Or they say, oh, I really liked that dog. We just moved in. Could we have, you know, can we, we'll get an adoption. So all of that is very important. The signals back there are very weak for our cell phones and for wifi and that type of thing. So that's, that's another problem. But we have true concerns about our safety and the dog's safety back there. And I really think if you insist on putting it back there, then we are going to have to have an argument. Because that is just the most safe location for our dogs, for our volunteers and for the children of our community. Thank you for your time.
So, Barbara, quick, I think Barb, when we spoke today, we, we talked about the different proposals and we don't want that there either. And the, the comments about kids getting raped and it just, it just kind of got out of control.
Well, that's absurd because I've been here 34 years and we've never even had a predator around here.
Yeah, I agree.
So that itself is not a concern. My concern is
I know your concern, and we talked a lot today. We, we, I think you, when we left, we said, we hope we have an understanding. You know that we agree with your concern. And we don't want it back there either, but we're just checking options. So there's nothing proposed anywhere yet. So, okay.
Like I said, for the volunteers, that is just not an option.
Yeah, we would have had, at that point, we would have had cameras back there that projected right into the police station, but we heard you loud and clear today that you do not want it back there. But to let you know, we did not, we weren't just going to throw you back there. We would have cameras and a walking path and the whole nine yards back there, but.
Any other comments?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Montes.
Good evening, Jack. 3374 Wayland. Just wanted to address a few things that were mentioned earlier. Number one, I do want to compliment Rich for his time and his effort to do the drawings of dog shelter and I think that was very helpful to see it, but just a different perspective. Number two, the other thing I wanted to mention is, you know, these things come out of thin air, whatever was put up, you know, online. In the last meeting, several people made it very clear that their preference was to put the dog shelter back behind the salt shed. So that's, you know, that came out of the last meeting and comments that were made there. You know, I don't know why people go out of hand online, but they do and you can't control them. Number three, I want to mention, you know, you talked about the rumors and, you know, people put stuff out there that's incorrect. One thing that would help is, you know, be more transparent. I've come up here in many meetings and said, if you could take those discussion items that have come up multiple times, like the dog shelter and live stream, and just put a little detail on the agenda. So we know that heads off a lot of rumor because all we have is a type that doesn't mean anything. And, you know, if there was more information shared with the community about what's happening in advance, it wouldn't cut back on people wondering and speculating what's going on. And the last thing I wanted to mention is, you know, the unfortunate thing with this dog shelter situation is it appears we're in react mode. We are trying to address a problem that it seems to me should have been addressed when this new building site was designed. That dog shelter was physically connected via the utilities to the old building. And that was closed under the culvert that's running over there right now as a temporary wireline. We're going to, down, we're going to have a new building by December or January. And I'm not sure what the shelter is going to do for water when it freezes. So that's some concern that maybe needs to be addressed immediately.
We've discussed it.
Okay, I'm just, but we don't know.
We know it's cold. Yeah.
We don't know that. And, you know, it's just unfortunate that we're in this position and we'll be in react mode when this should, you know, should have been actually addressed a long time ago. But that's all my comments.
Thank you for your comments.
Victoria Austin, Hemlock Street. I wanted to thank Mr. Hallibob for putting the time and effort into those drawings. And I wanted to say, it sounds like this is a great opportunity for the planning commission, the supervisors, the public, Barb and the valuable volunteers to all collaborate. Each person is bringing a different skill set, idea, vision and expertise to the table. That, this is great. This, this is something money can't buy. So I think if we can all get together and work out together, plans for the dog shelter, that would be optimal. And then when it does go to an architect and a builder, it would kind of save some money, which is funds that can go much better to the dog shelter for them to spend by presenting something that's already partially formed rather than starting from scratch. Thank you.
Bill Payne, Deer Creek Valley Road. As many of you know, I was the dog law officer for eight and a half years. I'm very familiar with shelter, its needs. One of the concerns that I have is for the safety. A lot of the volunteers are older. The further away that you put them, the more risk that they have. If they would fall or anything else like that. Some of those concerns are for the snow whenever we have a big snowstorm. Currently, right now, as the road department would plow the, the parking lot and driveway or the municipal building, they make that natural loop. Concern would be that some of the other areas, they may not be able to make that loop. They may be forgotten. Depending on, I think there was a lot of talk about, you know, being being behind the salt shed. I know that you guys have said that that's no longer an option. So, and I appreciate you guys, you know, putting that, taking Barb's tempo for that. But going forward, I would just like that to be known that, you know, the safety, the bound, the dog abandonment is a real concern as well. Barb already mentioned that, so I won't get into it. I would like to see a master plan that goes to the planning commission before any construction is started. We have a great planning commission. It's phenomenal, it's got a bunch of, you know, highly skilled experts on it. So I think that we should give them that opportunity. Trying to think if there's anything else. Yeah, it's just that the safety concern is my biggest. And there are volunteers that do come at all hours of the day. There are certain dogs that need medication during the middle of the night. I know that there's been times where there was a volunteer, John, he would come in after he worked his night shift at PennDOT. And he would spend time with the dogs, he would give them medicine because they do sometimes need medicine at night. Sometimes Barb has to come up in the middle of the night. I'd come up in the middle of the night whenever I was in the township to do that as well. So that is a concern. There are people that come and go at the shelter at all hours of the night.
So just like that, maybe we didn't emphasize this enough, but safety is of the utmost importance. So when somebody says someone's gonna get raped, that's, that's the real-
I'm not sure anybody's said that somebody would stay there. I'm not sure with that. And it may have been, I did not say that. I'm concerned with the volunteers.
I'm saying, I don't, okay. So if I, so if we could just go back to manners again, what I'm saying is, it is of the utmost importance of this board. So for anybody to suggest otherwise is, it's insulting, that's for sure. Of course we care about Barb. I told her we wanted to name it Barb Paswell West to Your Shelter. No, 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 no. So we, we know the people that work there, and the liability does not lie with Barb. It doesn't lie with anybody individual or the shelter. It lies with the township, the taxpayers, or have the liability. And that's what we're gonna do. I've looked into the American Welfare Organization about some things that are very wrong with that shelter that need to be fixed, that needs to be implemented into the new one. And that's where Barb is gonna come in, and she wants to be the resource for that, and we're going to let her do that. So, thank you.
Okay. Ms. George, I never said that, none of the board wanted to have, that you guys did not prioritize safety. That was never my intent. I actually said that I'm glad that you are looking at it.
And I'm just agreeing with you that safety is always the important-
For you to sit there and tell me and insinuate that I'm saying that the board was not about safety, I think that's wrong.
Right, that's your opinion. Anybody else?
Are we gonna have a discussion about this now?
No.
Just public comments.
Public comment.
All right. Roger Wood, Lymeberry Drive. Okay, so what I'm hearing right now is the proposal in the back. Nobody likes that. I mean, it's, that's pretty much done. And we appreciate your concern too.
Thank you.
But the other two proposals, somebody said it's hard to get to the utilities to one, and the other one, you're not sure if you can even get the land. So it seems like where it's at right now is the best place to put the shelter. But what I'm wondering is, and you guys, you come across like, you know, you're really concerned and everything. But what about this water line? How long has that hose been running from the building to the shelter?
I don't have the answer to that.
Since, yeah.
Since last fall.
Not since last fall, it's since this past spring.
So they-
Because the building was built first.
And they shut off the water. Well, what I'm trying to get at is, it's hard to, and maybe that's why people are kinda saying, you're not really caring too much and so forth, which it sounds like. And I really appreciated what you said in the beginning and so forth. But to leave something like that go by, with that hose, I mean, you know that's not right. You know, you know they have problems, it'll freeze, it gets hot in the summer. When are you gonna address that?
This is one of the reasons, I'd like to comment on that. This is one of the reasons why our township manager applied for a grant to make the whole situation better. And they're making the best out of the bad situation. And we're trying to expedite this as soon as possible, but again, it's ten months. I mean, you know, that's a long time. I mean, that's something that I don't understand why we let it go that long. And that's why some people, among other things, and you're right, I mean, some of these things that people say, that's just, it just isn't right. But it is, you know, the back part is, you know, out of the question. But can you get the water? I don't understand, I mean, that's something that can be easily done, you know that. Jeff, you know that too. That's easy to put the water line back into use there. And it would make it a lot easier for the volunteers.
But to do that water line, you have to dig it up. You have to find a tap, wherever the tap might be. Then you have to cut the asphalt and get the water line to the point. If you decide to move it, or whatever you're gonna do, you're gonna chase it again with the water line. So in all fairness, when I came on the board after Buck left, Dorothy, it was asked, it was asked, okay, we're gonna get you a new dog shelter, where do you want it? She said, I don't care as long, you know, I have some special things I want. So that's when it started happening to look-
Thinking out of context.
Listen, this is when I came in, this is what I heard. So out of context or not, that's what I heard. So as a board, we sat down and we looked at alternatives. These are the alternatives we have. We own property down there on the right-hand side. We have a hillside back here that drops off, it would need to cut and fill like a lot of money. Rich drew a beautiful thing. The only thing I don't see is a salt shed in here. I don't see it.
You can put that in the yellow section.
That's not, that's not the issue. The issue is, how much room do you have between the salt shed and say, we're gonna put a community center in, or whatever we're gonna do? What do we have to do to build that? And that's, that's, it's not that simple. You just can't say, okay, we're not gonna do, we're gonna put the dog shelter in the middle. It's just not that simple. You gotta think it through, and it costs you money to think it through.
And it'll cost you a lot more money to put it in the other two proposed sites that you have. And it's the, right?
Yeah.
Don't you disagree? Then re, you know, renovating and expanding and-
There's a lot of details in there you're not aware of. I mean, put shoes in there and stuff, all those-
But you have to put shoes in all the other places.
I know, you're gonna start digging all the concrete up that's there now. And Small made a point the other day too, what you do with the dogs for construction of that. All that would be, you can't do the renovation, you have the tire sewer lines, and there's a lot that's in the-
There's a lot that goes into it, but we're gonna tore up concrete, and they have dug in asphalt and put in water line. It can be done, it's not that long.
It's, it, it can be done. It's not, it just costs money to do it.
Sure.
So, yeah. But wouldn't it be nice to figure a place, dig a place, get the building and put the building up and bring everything to it, pave it all and be done with it?
That building could be put up pretty quickly, since we're trying to, we're moving faster than you think. I'm trying to find a place. Now that we know that she definitely doesn't want it down below, we're gonna try to move as fast as we can on one of the, maybe the three other places.
So you could temporarily run that water line to where it is now? And just leave her with, the water will freeze, I mean, it's a hose, you know? It's gonna freeze in the wintertime. Is there something you could do?
We really need the conversations in the background to stop. We just really need to be polite, we are live streaming this. It's very, very disruptive. So if we could please not do that, I would appreciate it.
I'm just wondering if you have ideas or you plan on doing that.
So this is the public comment portion. This is, again, the words you're gonna be saying. It's not really, it became back and forth, but it's supposed to be you providing comments.
Well, I appreciate it though, you know, I mean, this is how things get put out, and taken care of, and explained and understood. But that is something that should be taken care of. And more than likely, I, I think it's gonna end up being where it is. You know, I think if you look at the cost and whatever you do, I mean, I know you guys have expertise in that too, but that, to me, sounds like the best place. So if you ran the water-
Sorry, excuse me, I froze your dog because I was like, look, you were well past.
Oh.
Well, that's okay.
All right, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Let's go, give the ball.
So can I ask, what was the original plan when we applied for the grant?
So we have a discussion item, we'll talk about that, this is public comment.
Well, everybody else got to talk, but I can't talk?
You can talk when it's our discussion item, that's where it's on our agenda. It's not that you can't talk, of course you can. Any others, any other comments from the public?
Steve Lightchunik, four-two-six-eight, Glen Dunning Road. This seems to me, three quick things. It does seem to me, I've had some interaction with the planning commission as a citizen over other issues, and that's been a really positive experience for me. I do wanna also compliment all of you. I know you're always trying to thread a needle here, and someone's unhappy and somebody's happy no matter what you do. But I think, I'd like to, just with my little two seconds here, is to ask us all to go up to the thirty thousand feet. I've been, I've known Barb for years, and she's helped me out with two wonderful dogs. Other people are better acquainted to address the practicalities, and you all are obviously doing that. It's great to hear that the safety is a concern and so on. I think that other site is very impractical in that sense. But, you know, it's, it's a kinda rough time right now, and I'm, I'm gonna draw the dog shelter into a way bigger conversation here that we don't need to take up. But it's pretty hard to find anybody at any municipality and anywhere in the country that agrees on anything right now. And dogs are like one of the last things we got left. So I think this is a really good opportunity to just kind of work with that. And people obviously care about it, you've expressed your concern. Barb's got thirty years of human capital. Let's just not get ground out in the disputes about this and find something that works. And it seems to me that you have some tension here between the need to do something quickly for practical, for practical reasons, but also then communication is gonna be constant. Because in your urge to do it practically quickly, people are gonna feel like you're relevant. That's just what happens today, and the minute it hits the internet, people come down with a ditch horse. I just wanna close with one little thing. I looked a little bit into this because I heard it as a statistic on television before I knew any of this is going on. Dog ownership in this country, so I expect it's probably somewhat true here, is up forty percent in the last ten years. Gen Z and Gen Millennials and young families are way more likely statistically to own dogs. These are the very people that, as you're looking at, you know, development plans, you want moving in here, paying taxes and so on. I just think it is a really good statement that you don't put it wherever you end up doing this, that it's not tucked away somewhere. Maybe impractical, but please, I think it says a lot, people who don't know it, or even those of us who do live here a long time, I have since I'm four, to see it front and center, in a place done well, done practically, done safely, but in a place that says, look, this is the kind of community that relies around things like this. This is the kind of place you wanna live. You come in here, and the dog shelter's right there with everything else you need. It's a positive thing we could do. It may seem kind of ethereal.
Excuse me, Mr. Lightchunik, that's your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, attached to the minutes of the regular business meeting of August twenty-twenty-five, are there any questions regarding the minutes? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as, to accept the minutes as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Hallivault, second by Mr. Smallen, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Attached is a monthly report from the finance officer, are there any questions?
I have a question on, uh-
Would you mind shutting those doors for me? Thank you.
On the report that was in the minutes from last month into this month, there's no change in the next-tier loan at the bottom, it's the same figures. Number two's loan.
I didn't do the report, Tracy did, so I can't speak to that. But I used the August stuff for the next year. I believe when she was doing it, she also used the last year.
Okay. No, the balance is, oh, it's the same. Or the balance is the same?
No, I know.
Oh. Oh, okay, I got you now.
Thank you, Sue.
Okay.
Thank you, Sue. Do I have a motion to approve the finance officer's report as submitted?
My question.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smallen, second by Mr. Hallivault, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I hit it with my finger, sorry. Attached are the listed bills, are there any questions? Do I have a motion to pay the listed bills as submitted, and all approve reimbursable items in compliance with generally accepted accounting practices?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hallivault, second by Mr. Fleming, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Police chief's report, are there any questions? You ready for homecoming, chief? It's a big, big day around here, everyone's there. Public Works Forum's report, are there any questions? Engineers' report, do we have any questions? Scott, well, anything you have later? Nothing right now?
Nothing.
Okay. Attached is a planning zoning code enforcement report, do we have any questions? Parks and Recreation Report, any questions? So I know that Ms. Stark included the budget for the year, expenditures, I should say. And I know that there's a few items that are still missing from community days that she mentioned to me that she would add when that all gets squared away. Westier Number One Volunteer Fire Department Report, we did not receive a report. Number two, attached is Westier Number Two's report, are there any questions regarding the report? Are there any questions regarding Number Three Fire Department's report? EMS Report is attached, any questions? Acceptance of a resignation of part-time police officer. The board received the attached memo from Chief Loper stating that he was in receipt of a letter from Officer Vincent Casal indicating he would be resigning immediately. Are there any questions regarding the resignation of part-time police officer, Officer Casal? Do I have a motion to accept the resignation of part-time police officer Casal? And wish him the best of luck.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Hallivault, second by Mr. Fleming, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried, we wish him the best of luck.
Excuse me, Barb. Bob, does that leave us shorthanded right now?
Authorization for the advertisement of the twenty-twenty-six budget and budget workshops. The budgets, budget schedule and advertisements are attached. Are there any questions regarding the advertisement? Do I have a motion to authorize the township manager to advertise the twenty-twenty-six budget as dictated by and in compliance with the township charter?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fleming, second by Mr. Hallivault, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Authorization of the sale of a police vehicle. Chief Robert Loper requested the board authorize the advertisement of the sale of the following police vehicle, a twenty-eighteen Ford Interceptor. Are there any questions regarding that advertisement? Do I have a motion to authorize the township manager to advertise the sale of one twenty-eighteen Ford Interceptor in as-is condition?
Make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Hallivault, second by Mr. Fleming, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Is that gonna be through a municipat?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carried. Authorization for the dog shelter and concession stand conceptual plan estimates. At the last meeting, the board had discussed requesting a proposal from HHSDR Architects to perform architectural and engineering services for the township's dog shelter and baseball concession stand at Barrettford Park. Attached are the proposals for the first step, conceptual plans and estimates, and a fixed fee of ninety-two-hundred dollars for the dog shelter and forty-nine-hundred for the concession stand, plus reimbursable expenses for printing and copying. Are there any questions regarding these proposals?
I'm thinking, if enough people are interested in the planning commission taking it back, let them do that and accept the concession stand.
Any other comments?
I thought we would look at this to pass it and then put the thing in there that they do work with the planning commission on.
There are some things that this architecture firm would be, would be very helpful in deciding, I mean, as far as the sewer lines, all the utility lines, I think we were, a couple of these drawings, the couple of small mistakes are, I think there is sewage down there as well, I think there were lines everywhere that we're not aware of, where these people will find, and they actually may save us money in the long run to...
I didn't get a copy of that, what is you're looking at? Oh, it was a curvy today.
Yeah, well, there was, it's just finding the utility lines alone is monumental, and then everything else that's involved with it as well.
Well, what are we paying $9,200 for? The feasibility study of the location?
It's that, but it's also a conceptual drawing when, when they actually meet with Ms. Besquell, and then it's also coming up with the cost proposal. That's all three things.
So you have a budget.
Yeah. Then you know, they know what, where to get money and how much money you need to get transferred.
And it has to be with a certified architect, and it's somebody who's going to plan the entire municipal complex.
So I'll make the motion to, to accept this, but with the clause, with the, I wanted to work with the planning commission.
How's, how's that gonna work then? How's that gonna work as far as...
It's what was asked of us from what we heard here, so we put it in, and you have the architect look at what they have, and then meet with these guys, the planning commission, and get some ideas if they want to get some ideas. You put two roosters in the hen house and you see what you get, but that's what was asked.
So, so can I, why didn't we go out to bid for this?
Oh yeah, you don't have to, you're asking why did we not, because it should be bid, there's a legal requirement to bid it, because it's a professional service.
Yeah. When we first talked about this, I thought this was a firm that we used in the past. This is who designed this building, so they understand everything that happened over that old building, the connections here and all that, so...
Can we, can we not with the, with the talking right now, this is a process that we have to get through?
So can I ask now, what was the original plan when we applied for the grant for the dog shelter?
The original plan was to convert everything over there to parklet and renovate the dog shelter.
And that's where we came up to the $300,000.
Correct.
So I...
So an architect, just to let you know, an architect would also, when I mentioned the four different options, and if we throw out the one over the hill, three options, they evaluate all that and including renovations, so you still need an architect to, to renovate, no matter what, so you, you need an architect to...
I understand that, but, you know, some of the options are on property that we don't own, so I think we need to kind of narrow down the decision on whether or not to move it or to rehab it where it is.
I can interject, I've had conversations with the school board, they had a meeting last night, we are working on what comes next, I don't want to say anything premature, we don't have an official decision from the school board, but we are moving in a direction that seems to work for everybody.
And because it's property related, it has to be an executive session item.
Okay. Until the location's determined, I don't, I don't see why we would spend money now to come up with multiple different options.
Let's not forget, there's a, there's a election coming up in a month and a half, and social media likes to vilify us as it is, and people came up here this evening and made us feel like we're starving the dogs with water with the hose, I don't want to, I don't want to sit on this, I say we move forward, we have them work with our planning commission, it's a, yeah, it's another month.
We are not going to do this, we're going to have respect or you can leave, that's how this process works as a government, you can laugh all you want, this is the process in government, if you want to keep laughing, you can go outside.
So it, it is my opinion that we should look at the option of leaving it where it is and doubling the size of it, which we now know that there's room there, and then get the estimates on what the utilities, you know, would cost.
Mr. Wigan, that's, that's the question, I'm sorry to interrupt, how do we know, and I discussed this with Barb, how do we know the space is there, because when she met with myself, as I mentioned, Ms. Jordan, Mr. Hallabas, Mr. Shoup, things that were added, added space, Mr. Shoup, am I correct in saying that? From the original design? Right, so that's the importance of having an architect to come in and say, you know what, this, this may make sense, or hey, what if you tweak it this, this way or whatever, not saying it's, you know, kicking that in its teeth, I'm saying it's just, that's what they do, they evaluate all those different options, I spoke with the architect about this, and he said that's part of what that cost is, is working with Barb to evaluate these different locations, ask her what she needs and see which one makes the most sense, it is, it's not ramming anything down anyone's throat, it's evaluating. Nor are we going to exclude our planning commission, I agree with Jeff, I think we should...
No, ask them to be involved in it, but the thing is, is everybody got to understand, if, if we're, if we're gonna be carpenters, then we go out there and we build the shed, and if there's something in the way, you're gonna eat it, that's what the insurance policy is for this money, for having an architect design it. Now, we put a stipulation on it that the architect can design it, work with the planning commission, see what they got to do, come up with some different suggestions, and see what we can come up with, but if we wait another month, that's another month, and obviously we're not transparent.
Right.
Well, I would, I would be in favor of approving tonight the conceptual plan for renovating the dog shelter, knowing that, you know, the other options may not be feasible because...
We have to take a look at all the locations, all the possible locations.
If we're gonna expand this, we don't have a design for it.
Nor do we have a permanent location, we're not even sure.
Steps to come to discuss that cannot be discussed in public, that's going to come after this meeting in our executive session.
Okay, but we talked about it last month at a public meeting.
So what I have to talk about, what we have to present cannot be discussed in public, it is falls under executive session.
I understand, I haven't been told any of that information.
You're going to find out tonight.
Okay, well, I would like to see what Barb's husband came up with as far as alterations to the existing building too, and I do think that we need to get the water situation rectified before the winter.
I will second the motion that Jeff just made.
Well, I have another question, on the concession stand, we decided that we were gonna move forward with the conceptual drawing of this because of an electrical problem, was that electrical problem...
No, no, it wasn't because of, there is an electrical problem, but it wasn't because of that, this is actually part of the original park master plan. So what, what I was, what I was saying is, everything in that park is phased, so the next phase after the lower bowl is a concession stand.
But would this, would this not be covered under that grant that we have pending?
No.
Why wouldn't it?
Because I didn't apply, that, the grant, we have pennies for the lower bowl, that's the last phase, so what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to get ahead of it, so if we get a drawing, we get the, like Mr. Fleming said, you get the proposal, you get the cost, then you can apply for a grant with actual documentation backing that up, so I'm trying to get ahead of the next round of financing, I, I look to apply for a grant next spring for concession stand.
Are we, in the meantime, going to address the concession stand's electrical issue?
The board can discuss it, not, not tonight, I mean, because that's a totally different concession stand, but I can put it on as, as a discussion item, but it's, it comes down to what we discussed before, there's a, does the town, this also ties in with what we're talking about, the water line at, at that building. When, if you have a new concession stand going in, why are you going to spend $8,500 to run the line to the old building that's not gonna ever need it, because that's just gonna be a garage for Public Works?
Well, I thought in the last email from Little League that they found a, a different problem.
True, but they, if you remember, my, my reply, I'm pretty sure you're CC'd on that, my reply to them was, when you get your proposal from somebody else, send it to us and I'll send it to the board to evaluate, we haven't gotten that yet, so you have nothing to evaluate.
So are we gonna have to wait until next month to approve something?
Because how do you know, what, what are you approving?
Why wouldn't that fall under like an emergency repair?
Or, how's that an emergency?
Because they don't have electric, they had to move all the food, none of the refrigerators have power.
They, they, well, well, they're done for the season, aren't they?
I don't know.
I mean, they, I don't, I don't... I thought they explained to us they had electric, they just didn't have enough electric to run the fryers, but they had enough electric to run the...
No, not after the last email, did you get the last email?
I was under impression, they just...
They found a problem in the box, not with the underground wire.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I'm saying, we don't, what their electrician is saying is contrary to what our electrician said, until we get something from their electrician, you, you can't base something off of conjecture, that's all it is right now.
Okay, well, I don't understand why they have to get an electrician, why can't we just...
We did.
Have our electrician go back and check what they just found?
Because we need to know what they found, we need to get that report from them saying what they found. I mean, I can call our electrician, have him come back out again, he's gonna say the same thing, because he, as he did last time, what they said is they found some, some break in the ground, he said, there, there's gotta be a break, some, I don't know if they said they found a break.
There was a picture in the email that she sent us with loose wires in the box.
Yeah, but where, where is that, and is that what actually caused the problem? Here's, here's my question, now regarding Mr. Wigan, when I saw that picture, I said, if that's all it is, why don't the electrician just fix that wire right there in there if he's looking at it? He didn't, so it has to be more than that, which makes me think what our electrician saw was accurate, so you, you agree, right, he could have fixed that if it, if that's all it is, is a couple loose wires.
I don't know what he was told.
Right.
Was he allowed to fix something?
That, that electrician?
Or did he need our approval to do it?
If he, if that's all, if it's something minor, it's something I can approve, if it's something more greater, I have to bring it back to the board of supervisors. So that's all, we're, we're in that process of trying to get information.
If, if the electrician was there and he thought it was a fixable thing, we would already had a cost for it, but he said it was some kind of wire coming from the field, which there was problems with that before, but reading the email that came out, they said, well, there's a problem in the box, well, obviously, our electrician looked in the box, and he didn't see a problem in the box, so we don't even know what we got yet, that's why the statement was made, at least that's the way I took it, to have their electrician look at it, and if they get into it and say, hey, it's a fuse, it's, it's some kind of ground wire, something that could be fixed easy, he can do it quick, we don't have to do it, I mean, it's just, just the way it works.
But as of right now, like I said, the only option we have is an $8,500 fix that brings 240 volts to a building that doesn't, isn't gonna need 240 volts if we build this new concession stand.
In two years.
In a year.
If we get the grant.
All right, so I have a motion on the table.
I second. Mm-hmm. Not only conceptual drawing, but a location, we have three locations up on top now that, we talked to Barb today, she was happy with all of the, all of the three, so let's work out some costs, and see what it's gonna cost to do each location. Yep.
So we'll take this two, Mr. Fleming? Mr. Hallabas?
Yes.
Mr. Smallin?
I'm gonna say no, I, I still think we should just do the concession stand right now.
Mr. Wigan?
No.
And myself is yes. Discussion, discussion development density.
Madam Chair, I, I just wanted to follow up on the discussion that this board had last week regarding some measures that I think, I think there was sort of unanimous support for having myself, Mr. Shook and Mr. Shoup take a look at the zoning ordinance and, and try to address some of the, you know, development density issues, and so I don't think we need to get into a big discussion, but I think our request, I guess, I can speak for Mr. Shoup and Mr. Shook, in order to streamline this and try to get this moving, our, our thought was to authorize us to prepare a draft ordinance, then send it to the planning commission for sort of the sausage making, if you will, so that, you know, we, we have something, a framework that they can start reviewing, I don't think it'll come out, you know, in one meeting and maybe even two, but at least we, we give them something a little bit more baked than just, you know, hey, here's some ideas, try to address them, I think that'd make for a quicker turnaround to this board, so if there's, we don't need a vote on that, but if there's, if that makes sense to everybody, that's the way we think we should proceed.
I agree.
Did they discuss it at their workshop?
No, no, this is, this is the idea of, we're gonna, based on this board's feedback, we're gonna prepare an ordinance, you know, kind of staff level, then it'll be presented to the planning commission at a future meeting for them to review that draft comment, give us better, different ideas, whatever it is, and then we'll get it through the planning commission process in the, to a final form that be recommended back to this board to schedule a public hearing.
All good?
Okay, thanks, we'll proceed in that manner.
We've gone through the dog shelter update, we kind of moved that to the beginning so we can...
Do you want me to touch on the water line?
Yes, please.
So what happened with the water line, the old building was connected to the dog shelter, that's what happened, so when we turned off the water, when the old building was, when we fully moved over to this building, we called Oklahoma Water, they turned off the water, it was the week before Christmas, I got a hysterical call from Jody French, who's our secretary, saying dog shelter doesn't have any water, and so we contacted Oklahoma Water, they came back out, they turned the water back on, and we realized that that was an issue, because nobody knew, it was rigged, there's no other way to put it, from the back wall of the restrooms and went under the asphalt and connected to, they, they have a basin in there, a wash basin, that's all they have in a dog shelter. So, so when we demoed that building, we realized we don't have a problem, if you demo the building and the water line's there, it's gonna discontinue the water altogether, so Fritz Rieke, our Public Works Foreman, said, hey, we have a workaround, we can run a hose from this building and provide water to that same basin, they did that, I wanna say in January, was when it went, that went, went live, and yeah, it did freeze a couple times, but Mr. Rieke said, if you keep the water running, even the slow drip and everything, it won't freeze up, that's not ideal, Ms. Besquell and I talked about that, but here's the problem, when that building was demolished, we talked about ripping out the concrete pad, we had the, we had Oklahoma Water put a new crock in the front yard, and we were, we left the connector that went to the dog shelter in the back of that building, in, it's in the ground right now, you can, I can go show, I can show anybody, that, when the pad was removed, that line was supposed, was supposed to be connected from that front crock to that line and they'd have water, we removed the hose, the pad's still there, because we got into an issue with the contractor, pad's still there, now you can't do that, so the only viable option is to run the water line the entire way around the building, going toward the EMS building, the whole way up across, basically two sidewalks, across the asphalt, underground, and then connect into the building, so what we're trying to do, again, in this process right now, is trying to get as far into this as possible to see what we can and cannot do, so with the architect on board right now, we can actually like... It's important to say too, we spent several, several hours today talking with Barb to trying to come up with a situat, it's not like we're just ignoring this problem, there was, we took hours out of our workday today, again, to meet with her and talk about options, so we're not sitting on our hands up here, we're trying to... Yeah, so like, like Mr. Fleming said, it may seem like it's easy, a lot of these, these problems we have, easy to fix, things are not always easy to fix, and it doesn't mean we're just ignoring them, it means that... Yeah. So that's, that's all.
No, it's not, it's not public comment, if everybody wants to ask a question...
I thought this was a discussion, I apologize, I didn't know it wasn't.
Live streaming update, we've already given that? New business for future discussion or action?
The topic was brought up tonight about our public hearing notifications, and I know we can't make a decision tonight, but I did notice...
to follow what Richmond Township did, which was have registration at four o'clock, by four o'clock the day of a meeting. And so we did that. But as I got into this, there is a lot of back and forth. It takes my time. It's inconvenient for the residents. If we can just post a, a link, it makes a lot, lot of, lot of sense.
As long as we're still aware of everybody that's online.
So the way they're doing it, we're doing it now. Nobody can like Zoom bomb us and, you know, say things because it's a webinar. Yeah, sorry, I couldn't find the word. So that got rid of the issues that we were concerned with, with manipulating and, you know, people just coming in and saying things on, on Zoom.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yep. New business for future discussion or action?
The topic was brought up tonight about our public hearing notifications. And I know we can't make a decision tonight, but I did notice that the signs that we put out are very hard to read, especially if you're driving down a road at even 20 miles an hour. Can we make it our standard that any public hearing signs would be 18 by 24 inches, the same size as a political sign? So that they're more visible to the community and to the neighbors that it would affect?
Man, legally, you could do that. I will say that what you do is pretty much universal across municipalities that, in my experience, but there's no, no restriction on making larger signs.
Okay. I don't have any announcements. Is there something I'm forgetting? No, okay. Public on, public comment on non-agenda matters of general township concern. Please approach the microphone, list your name and address, and leave your comments to three minutes.
I was talking about 5036 Bakerstown Corner Road. Since this is for non-agenda items only, can we still bring up a question regarding the water line from, based on some of the things that Mr. Mater said? Or is that not permissible?
Yeah, Mr. Hallabaugh, historically, the board has limited this to non-agenda items because we've committed so much of the meeting to the agenda items, specifically the one you're, you're talking about.
No.
Correct.
Victoria Austin, Hemlock Street. I want to agree with Josh about the signage. I don't know if you remember whenever we were having some of the hearings for the Leto well site, which is real close to my house. I brought in photos. The, the signs had actually curled up and were totally, you couldn't read anything on them. The moisture in the air, which right now we're in a drought, but they had curled up. They were illegible. And I did bring signs to the supervisors' meeting and, and showed that something needed done, that there was no way. I even stopped by Dollar General too and took pictures of the signs there and that they had curled in on themselves. So you couldn't read anything on them at all. And I do remember Mr. Shoup went out and did some different signs and put some particle boards. Okay, someone did put backing on them on boards and had them more sturdy. But if we continue that, because these signs were, you couldn't see them even walking along the road. You couldn't see them. They had totally curled up. So that's it.
Good suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Scott Wolf, it's like Schuster. I appreciate the work that you're trying to do amongst all the opposition for the dog shelter. The, the thought occurred to me in walking Schuster Road and McCroll Road, picking up trash. We put the millings down after we paved about a foot wide. Some places it's two feet deep, but it's only a foot wide. It's costing us a lot of money to get rid of those millings. Can we just use them widely along the berm? Some places it would flow evenly right into the existing ground, and we could maybe make those shoulders two feet, three feet wider. It would burn some of those millings up, and it would be beneficial the next year when we paved it. And we wouldn't have such a big pile to try to get rid of. And another thing was the discussion in the, the budget coming up. Mr. Fleming was really surprised a few months ago about what we pay to have fire hydrants installed. Maybe we can, being that's a budgeted amount and we have more fire hydrants to install, put that up for bid, we can maybe get an extra fire hydrant put in for the amount that we have budgeted. And I wanted to comment about the War Memorial. I heard some things that I didn't like. A couple of things about the War Memorial. I went over there and spent a couple hours, quite a few hours weeding that. I would like to continue to do that despite the township primarily doing that. One of those monuments says that it was donated by the citizens of West Dear Township. And I feel it's right that the citizens maintain that and not the Public Works that's coming out of our money, you know, taxpayer money to do that. And once it's, once it's done like it is now, it's, it's not very much to maintain. So I'd like to continue to do that.
Thank you, Scott.
Mark Schmidt, 25 Joseph Street. In line with the suggestion regarding the signs for the advertisement for the conditional uses, one alternative or one other thing you could do would be to send notices to property owners within 300 feet of conditional use. That's, that's a suggestion.
Will we do that? Gotcha. Right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Motion to adjourn at 9:55. Eight fifty-five.